One, we're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant at Arms, has the lobby been attended, front lobby been attended to?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of this meeting. I'm pleased to welcome you to the March 5th school board meeting. The time is 6:02 PM and this meeting is called to order. Prior to tonight's performance, we have been enjoying music from the Harnes Marsh Middle School Chamber Orchestra. The Chamber Orchestra is under the direction of Kansas Sunbeam and was a featured act at Friday's Lee County Arts Walk, performing outside of the Hotel Banyan. So, before we continue the rest of the meeting, they're going to play us one more song, I believe, correct? Okay, may proceed, thank you. Welcome to Jurassic Park. So, had to say that. Great job. Please give us a moment as they clear the performance area, thank you. Okay, everyone. At this point, we'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and district vision to be a world-class school system. At this moment, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under Board Office, one item under Academic Services, three items under Business Services, three items under Human Resources, twelve items under Operations, one item under Public Hearings, and four items under Good of the Order or Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Langford Fleming, seconded by Ms. Jordan, please record your vote. Okay, motion, motion approved six zero. As is the custom of the board, Board Member Jordan will lead us in the invocation, followed by Board Member Persons, who will lead us in the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance. At this point, I'm going to ask you, please stand. Ms. Jordan, please lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can, and wisdom to know the difference. God, thank you for protecting our children, our staff, and our families. We understand that we need your guidance and strength with every decision made. Amen.
Mr. Person, please lead us, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is Lieutenant Colonel Mario A. Johnson, Senior Army Instructor from Island Coast High School. Lieutenant Colonel Johnson served twenty-four years in the Army in numerous assignments and retired as the Professor of Military Science and ROTC Department Head for the University of Central Florida. This is Lieutenant Colonel Johnson's ninth year as a ROTC instructor in the district.
Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Bertine Vences, the Cadet Commander of Island Coast High School, Junior ROTC. Cadet Vences played an instrumental part of the Island Coast High School Junior ROTC Male Raider Team that won the Florida State Championship. Also, we placed ninth in the United States National Championship. He is actively involved in all Junior ROTC teams and is currently part of our drill team, competing at the district championships, which, by the way, they gave him fourth place, very good. Cadet Vences also has applied for a four-year scholarship at the Army, at the Army ROTC National Scholarship as part of University of South Florida. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This evening's student representative is Erica Malone. Erica is an IB senior attending Riverdale High School, where she actively participates in a variety of extracurriculars. She served as a junior class president as the current senior class president. She's also a president of the National Honor Society and vice president of the Spanish Honor Society. Since her freshman year, Erica's played on the varsity girls' basketball team, holding the position of captain for the past two years. After graduation, Erica has been accepted and plans to attend the University of Central Florida, majoring in clinical psychology, in the hopes of becoming a forensic psychologist. Please welcome Erica. Next on the agenda are acknowledgements. Erica, please go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight's character word is courage. Courage, the personal strength to face difficulties, obstacles, and challenges, having the determination to do the right thing even when others do not. The design display is by Annabella Brights, an eleventh-grade student at Estero High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Next up on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Huffman, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted, thank you, are posted, are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent or board attorney may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that you keep decorum and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further, personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed by the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty speakers, two minutes if there are thirty speakers, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, so sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chair, at this time, there are fifteen speakers that wish to address the board this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Please ensure you've completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but has not filled out a public comment card? Okay, seen none. I would like to reemphasize some of the key points of Attorney Huffman's instructions again. You know, as I said, we want to make sure that everyone is heard, but we want to make sure we're doing in a professional manner. We, as I said, we appreciate that. At this point, Attorney Huffman, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Bob Jurick, Marge Cox, Krista Carlos, Richard Cokely, Catherine Wilson.
Now, this is good. Good evening. You know, you kick around ideas and you try to figure out how to present something that makes an impact. And even on the right here, even at two minutes in the back, you change your scripts, you start going through your head, and you resort back to your original thoughts and minds, so bear with me as I try to get through this. The topic is artificial intelligence, impact to students' careers and jobs in the future. As you know, it's all over the media today. Parents are seeing it, children are seeing it, you're experiencing it today. I'm sure you have children and grandchildren, they're in the world now, that AI is going to pack them tremendously, but you really don't know how and when or where. I do. Been forty-four years in the computer industry. Last ten years, working around artificial intelligence, machine learning language, NLP, quantum computers. I left the industry four years ago. I'll tell you why. Burned me out. The changes are so severe, I just had to move away from it and take it up on the side. By 2030, McKinsey put out a report with Accenture, eight-hundred-million jobs globally will be gone. Seventy-five-million jobs in the United States will be gone in the next three years. That didn't impact enough, I got more. If you look in the past couple of weeks in the IT firms, you know it's been laying off companies, laying off people in these companies. You know why? Artificial intelligence, they're losing their jobs. Sixty percent of Americans who graduate college are stuck right now. They don't have what they want, their careers, they're not in the jobs that they wanted to get into. Parents are bankrupt, trying to afford, putting their kids through college, and when they graduate, no place to go, no jobs, and it's going to get worse. Fifty percent of all the employees by 2025 in all the major corporations are going to be re-skilled based on what they did. They changed their jobs and they're going to re-skill them because they're not going to have the manpower behind it to fill the void that's needed drastically. Fact. Millennials and the Gen Z's are changing everything in the world. That's why I resigned, I couldn't keep up with the Gen Z's, the white Gen Z's, they were changing things so fast, technology was changing things, it was, it was too much. You meet a Fortune 50 company, you see their problem, and you sit back and realize how major that problem is. Today, things have changed quite a bit, and you'll find, I found that colleges are looking, hiring different people. Academic scores are not number one anymore, they get you in the door. What they're looking for, really, are well-rounded, critical-thinking kids, problem solvers. When they go for interviews today, I know this for a fact, when they go for interviews today, the GPO will get you in a board, in a room, but they're going to ask really critical questions. Tell me what you did. How'd you solve this problem? What problems have you solved in the past year?
Thank you, sir, your comments, your time is up. Thank you. Sir, could you please state your name for the record? Could you please state your name for the record?
Bob Jurick, living in Bonita Springs, Florida. I'm just interested to talk to the board about this, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marge Cox, I live in Bonita Springs, I'm a retired educator, and I've had the privilege to be one of the volunteers in Lee County at Spring Creek School for their program that they're working with, at least the one I'm working with, with second graders. And I just wanted to say how impressed I was with the packet that they put together for the volunteer training, it was excellent, and I've been to a lot of trainings over the years. This training was for one group of people to work in that program. It included some volunteers who were retired educators, but there were some who weren't, and that training packet was so well-done, anybody could use it and help kids. And it has been a pleasure to be a part of it. I applaud Lee County for not just saying, oh, these kids have a problem, but saying, these kids have a problem with their reading and we're doing something about it. And I really appreciated their commitment to student education because, and I understand I'm biased with this as a retired librarian, but reading is critical for whatever they're going to do as a job later in life and for their pleasure of just enjoying reading. And I can see a difference from the first week that I worked with my five kids, who are adorable, but then I tend to think all kids are adorable, so that may not be a real discerning comment. But they have worked hard, they are better readers than when they started with the program, and I just wanted to compliment you as a board for looking at ways to make a difference for kids who may be struggling, not just giving up, going up, they can't learn. It's like, no, all kids can learn, sometimes they just need a little extra boost. So, thank you for your commitment to education, to kids, to all kids. Thank you.
My name is Rich Cokely, I'm a resident of Fort Myers in the Marina Bay community, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the bus stop in that community. Our community started really in 2005 under a master development plan, a conceptual master development plan for twenty-five-hundred acres in the tree line area, it was a name called Arbuthood. The master development plan is actually a city ordinance, it's a document produced by the city, City Ordinance 3226. It provides conditions for approval for the development, for that overall development. In that master plan, item six of that master plan talked about school impacts. The very first item on the school impacts said that the developers should cooperate on the location of school bus stops throughout the project. So, that was number one, the first item. There were two others. The second one listed was to convey property to, to deal with school requirements. The property, the third one was to deal with the school credits tied to that and paying the school impact fees associated with that. So, our developer was part of that overall plan. Our developer, GL Homes, built our community and the community to the north of us, Botanic Lakes, that was about five-hundred acres of that total plot. What our developer did, in accordance with the second item that you listed as your requirement, is they transferred, they conveyed thirteen acres to the school district for a school. That is the thirteen acres where Tree Line Elementary is located today, they did that. The second thing they did is they constructed a bus stop in the Botanic Lakes community and a bus stop in the Green Bay community, according to the first criteria that was established as a requirement by the school district under the master development plan. So, we did what you were asked to do, the developer did what you were asked to do. Now, the community to the north of us, the Botanic Lakes community, apparently is grandfathered for their bus stop, for whatever reason, our, our community is not grandfathered for the bus stop, and we, our, our students, the students of Marina Bay, are being required to wait for the bus stop in an unsafe place outside of the community. The tree line bus stop where we're asked to stay is not, according to Florida statute 1006.22, the most reasonably safe location available, it just is not. The location inside the community is more safe than that. Which of you, as, as, as a parent, would send your student to wait outside when you have a perfectly suitable bus stop in the community, in front of a limited lighting area, a dark, high-speed, high-volume, unlit crosswalk, limited sight distance, complex intersection, negative traffic impact? It's just the wrong thing to do. You need to put the bus stop in the community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Wilson, and I'd like you to consider the safety and well-being of our children in Marina Bay. I am here to advocate for the immediate relocation of our school bus stop. I am here to advocate for the immediate relocation of our school bus stop from a dark intersection plagued by a history of accidents and speeding with no protection from the weather, to a pre-existing bus stop that offers a concrete structure, a roof, benches, and lights. First and foremost, the safety of our children is paramount. The current bus stop's location is at a dangerous intersection. It exposes our young ones to unnecessary risks every day. Moving it to a safer location with proper infrastructure, such as a concrete building, will serve as a vital protective shield. This change can significantly reduce the chances of accidents, ensuring that our children are shielded from the hazards of passing traffic and providing parents with peace of mind. The lack of proper lighting at the current bus stop poses a serious risk, particularly during the early morning hours or darker evenings. Inadequate visibility increases the vulnerability of our children to potential dangers. By moving the bus stop to a location with proper lighting, we guarantee a safer waiting environment. This essential change ensures that our children are visible and protected, minimizing the risks of accidents and potential harm. An absence of the shelter exposes our children to the harsh elements of weather during their wait for the school bus. A pre-existing bus stop with a concrete wall and roof provides essential protection, shielding our children from rain or extreme temperatures. The relocation of our school bus stop from a dark and dangerous intersection to an existing safer bus stop is straightforward, an immediate solution to answering our safety concerns. I really liked that the word tonight was courage, and they said to do the right thing, and this is the right thing to do for our children. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Joe Bino, Paul Gamache, Erica Kinganis, Jerry Ware, Jennifer Kearns.
Good evening. My name is Krista Carlos, and I am the parent of a six-year-old boy with autism who currently attends North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts in their ESE classroom. He also participates in the bus transportation for ESE students and rides the bus to and from school. Over the past two months, myself and other ESE families have been experiencing significant problems with the bus transportation for our children, specifically the ESE buses. Due to understaffing, our children on numerous occasions have been made to sit and wait at the school over an hour after dismissal, waiting for their bus to arrive, which in turn does not deliver them home until two to three hours past dismissal time. We, as parents, feel it is unacceptable for our children to be delivered home after 4:00 and 5:00 PM, after they have been on the bus to school in the 6:00 AM hour and at school all day. These children have social and behavioral difficulties that cause stress and anxiety when they are out of routine and structure. Many children, including my own, are non-verbal or limited verbal and cannot say to a teacher or administrator, "Please call my mom to come pick me up." These transportation delays are causing your teachers to stay after their contracted hours to be with kids until the bus comes, which we all know bodes no favor with teachers, especially in a time of a national teacher shortage. I have taken the first steps to ask the Transportation Department to communicate with parents when the ESE buses are going to be double-booked on routes, so that we, as parents, can know ahead of time of these delays. The Transportation Supervisor, James Linum, declined to talk such solutions and told me, "We don't speak to parents." Our school administrators are unable to communicate these delays with us until an hour after school is already out, as the Transportation Department will not communicate these delays with the schools either. I have signed a statement of support from another ESE family at the school, and I've also spoken to my son's teacher, who agreed with the concerns that I presented. However, her school administrator, James Sams, advised her that she should not publicly sign a statement of support to the board. I am here tonight to bring this issue to your attention in the hopes that the Transportation Department can be brought to a higher standard of care and understanding for our ESE students. The least that can be done in light of short staffing circumstances is to have an open dialogue with the parents and the school, so that our children are not sitting and waiting for hours just to be brought home. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the School Board, my name is Joe Bino. I don't have any children or grandchildren in this community, but I feel it's extremely important to protect all of our children. I'm here to advocate for the immediate relocation of the school bus stop from a perilous intersection to a designated bus stop within the safety of our community. First, the current bus stop's location is at a dangerous intersection, no matter what other people seem to say about it. The absence of protection from accidents and inclement weather poses a significant threat to the well-being of our children. By moving the bus stop to a secure building, we can provide a robust barrier against potential accidents, ensuring the safety of all of our children as they wait for their school bus. It's essential to highlight that buses currently enter the community gate for essential support services to students, complying with federal law for door-side pickups without issue. This signifies that the logistics of the bus entry into the community are well-established, making the proposed relocation operationally feasible and in alignment with current practices. Moreover, the existing bus shelter within our community stands as an ideal alternative. This shelter boasts a covered roof, cinder block construction, lighting, three benches, electrical outlets with safety controls, a trash can, and a bike rack. Its existence provides a ready-made solution that ensures the physical comfort and safety of our children. The anticipated development of a fire station and a park across the street, coupled with a new apartment complex, is set to escalate traffic, further jeopardizing the safety of our children. However, the city's delay in conducting a traffic study until the completion of the apartments poses a significant concern. Relocating the bus stop promptly would proactively address the potential rise in traffic and preemptively safeguard our children from increased risks. A sobering reality is the presence of memorials along Tree Line, with six memorials for individuals killed on that stretch between Daniels and Colonial. The close proximity of two memorials are within 50 feet of our bus stop, including one directly in front of it, underscores the urgency of this situation. The proposed relocation is not just about improving the current condition, but is a proactive measure to prevent potential tragedies in the future. I was driving into our community two weeks ago, and this is just an example of something that happens occasionally, I'm sure it's not the plan, but their bus stopped in the left lane in front of our community, so that the kids had to get out of the bus, walk across the right lane onto the curb, which is extremely dangerous. I know the bus has their stop signs up, but the traffic goes extremely fast in this area, and a lot of times, they may not see it, and we don't want to risk anybody getting hurt. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Gamache. Thank you for your time. I'm also here to advocate for moving the bus stop from Marina Bay to a safe location. I'd first like to thank the students, the parents, the grandparents of the Marina Bay community who have come here tonight, and the more than 500 residents who have signed a petition to show support to move the community bus stop to a safe location. So everyone here may know that this is not our first discussion on this topic. It was very disappointing to receive a response from the Lee County School District, which stated that the Marina Bay community bus stop on Tree Line not only meets but surpasses the state mandated safety requirements. We, as a community, strongly disagree that this is a safe location, and therefore, we are continuing in our endeavor because we believe that it not only falls short of being the safest available option, but it's clearly unsafe, period, full stop. As others have discussed, Tree Line is an area of heavy traffic with all types of vehicles, including large trucks and trailers and tow SUVs and cars, a lot of aggressive drivers weaving in and out, cutting across in every direction, a lot of risk. There are four lanes of traffic, there's no traffic light at the entrance, and there's a turnaround area very near to where the bus stop is currently located. Traffic enters and exits onto Tree Line directly in front of the bus stop. As mentioned, there have been a number of fatal motor vehicle accidents in the area, one of which took out one of the lights, which plunges the area into darkness before the sun comes up, which further exacerbates the issue during the early morning pickup hour. So all of these characteristics increase the risk and level of exposure for a student being involved in a motor accident. So student safety should be the top priority when determining school bus routes and stops. The current bus stop, which requires students to leave a gated community where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour and wait on the side of a four-lane road with speeds exceeding 45 miles an hour, is clearly not a safe choice. I would encourage anyone who questions the veracity of our concerns to visit the location and directly observe the traffic, ideally before sunrise and on a school day. To many of us in the community who have done...
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Time is up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Erica Kinganis, and I have the privilege of being one of a concerned mom at Marina Bay. I'm here to discuss with you our current bus stop. In September of 2023, the light pole directly adjacent to our school bus stop was knocked out by a driver within one hour after the bus stop picked up our children. Had the children been there, they would have been injured. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens said, "This is safe." A fire station and park are planned to have developed across the street of this school bus stop, increasing the risk of traffic. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens says, "This is safe." A new apartment complex has been erected across the street from this bus stop, providing yet another way that traffic can be increased. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens said, "This is safe." The city of Fort Myers will not do a traffic study until these apartments have been completed. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This is safe." The intersection has no traffic control, it is often used as a U-turn. There is in fact 14 different turns that can occur right at this median. But Larry Stevens, I'm sorry, Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This is safe." Children have no shelter, there is nowhere for them to sit and wait safely away from the curb and the roadway, in the dark and during the early morning hours. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This is safe." Parents wait and block the exiting traffic on days of inclement weather, but Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This is safe." We provided you with video that shows a bus that did not stop at the bus stop, but in fact, stopped in the middle of the street, causing our students to go on to the road in order to get on their bus. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This is safe." There are six memorials of people who have been killed on Tree Line, between Daniels Parkway and Colonial. Two of them are within 50 feet of this bus stop, and one is right in front. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This is safe." Between 2022 and 2024, from Tree Line to Silver Ridge Boulevard, there were nine crashes and 24 traffic stops. On Tree Line and Plantation Garden Drive, there is 21 crashes and 30 traffic stops. But Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens say, "This bus stop is still safe enough for our children." Lee County Schools has entered all of the adjacent communities within two to three miles of our community, which is Plantation Somerset, Colonial Country Club, Plantation Bridge Town, and Botanical Lakes. This bus shelter in our community has never been used since its construction in 2017. It has a covered roof, cinder block construction, lighting, three benches, electrical outlets with safety control, a trash can, and a bike rack. The distance from our entrance, our kids...
Thank you, your time is up.
Ladies and gentlemen of the School Board, my name is Jennifer Kearns, and I stand before you today as a parent of Marina Bay. I'm a parent that won't allow her child to stand at that bus stop because of how dangerous it is. I have a plea for the safety and well-being of our children and a request that you move our bus stop. Imagine the hustle and bustle of a busy street corner on Tree Line where our current bus stop is located, and I use that term loosely, because there is the chaos of rushing vehicles, blaring horns, the constant threat of an accident. There is no bus stop structure, no bench, no safety, no shelter. They stand in the rain and darkness while speeding cars head straight at them. The police department categorizes Tree Line a high-speed area. This intersection has no traffic control and 14 different turns that can occur right in front of the bus stop. Our children are forced to navigate this perilous environment every single day, and it is not only inconvenient but downright dangerous. As Erica stated, in September of 2023, the light pole just adjacent to this school bus was knocked down one hour after our kids were picked up. What do you think would have happened if they had been there? We have nine, had had nine crashes at this corner in the past two years. Is this the vision you have when you think of a children's bus stop? Is that what it looks like? Now let me paint a contrasting picture, the vision of safety, security, and comfort. Picture an established, safe, concrete bus stop with a roof adorned with lights, benches, and a palpable sense of security. This is not a dream, this is our reality. We already built it as per city mandate. We have that very safe and very unused bus stop just sitting in our community. And guess what? It is a mere 90 seconds from the current bus stop. Our children are worth 90 seconds. We have asked for this bus stop to be moved several times already and have been denied by Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens because it meets the criteria for safe as per the bus driver training manual, of all things. Is the criteria that no children have died yet? In conclusion, this is not about relocating a bus stop, it's about making a conscientious decision to prioritize the safety and the well-being of our children. You have been chosen to be the advocates for our children. You have the power to change this hazard into a safe and secure start to the school day. Please safeguard our children and move the school bus stop to our established safe location in Marina Bay. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? India Palencia, Sarah Braun, Denise Nyström, John Leone, and Jaclyn Perez.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was moving up correctly. Good evening. Of course, I am Jerry Ware, and you surely are asking me, "Why am I here today?" It's amazing when I rise in the morning, I thank God for another day. And by the way, by tomorrow morning, I'll be 82, 82 years around the sun. But needless to say, I ask the Lord every morning, "How may I serve you today?", and I was commissioned to come before you today with regret, because I hold in my hand a worthless, disingenuous document. What is it? The agreement that was signed between the district and the NAACP 2018, as I sat in Donwell High School, with the television screens, Valerian reporters there taking pictures of an agreement. Now this agreement, I can't read you the entire agreement, but it says that the district will create and fund an office of diversity and inclusion, which will focus on eliminating racial and socioeconomic inequities within the district, to include eliminating achievement gaps and disparities in student discipline, improving learning opportunities for students of color, improving diversity of district and school staff, et cetera, et cetera. Time will not permit me to address it in its entirety. Therefore, I will have to refer to it in certain sections. Now, who am I referring to? To my left, and I hope you all will stand up, I have with me Makaria and Brooklyn and their two parents. I want you to look at their miniature statues. They were involved in a fight at Horne's Marsh Middle School. Supposedly, they decimated almost a principal that's almost 5'11", weighing over 200 pounds. He must be mighty weak to let that 120-pound and probably 100-pound young lady taken out. Needless to say, these girls were handcuffed... Needless to say, these girls were handcuffed and jailed. Only two of the five girls that were involved in the fighting were charged with not only disorderly conduct, but hitting an officer, administrative person, causing harm to them, charged with harmful, whatever you call it. This is the second time that I've come before you complaining about how the sheriff department is treating our children. I know my time is about to end, so I'm going to say to you, all lawsuits are not the only recourse to solving racial disparities that were done to integrate schools, which was probably the worst thing to be done. We're better off with.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. Your time is up. Ms. Ware, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is India Palencia. I'm also here with Marina Bay. Dr. Bernier, and ladies and gentlemen of the school board, thank you for seeing us and listening to us again. I really appreciate it. Earlier, we provided you some folders, and under tab one, you will find a wealth of information and documentation supporting our mentioned pleas to relocate our bus stop. What you won't find is a compelling argument from the transportation department members of Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens, who have, unfortunately, failed to exercise due diligence in our concern. What Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens have provided is the briefest denial letter, inclusive of absolutely no explanation, an antiquated policy replaced last year, and a bus driver's training manual reference as the standard, which actually supports our claim further. Despite our extensive evidence, Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens insist the current stop is safe. I find it embarrassing that we, as concerned parents and constituents, have to seek your intervention. It's disheartening that Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens have neglected the safety of our children, while each of you have tirelessly strived for a professional, functioning school district in Lee County. And to what end? To save money? To save time? To play to some kind of politics? Are these more important than the lives of our kids? I urge you, maybe it's a motion, I don't know what it is. Dr. Bernier, I ask you, please take action where Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens have faltered. Moving the bus stop to the clubhouse shelter aligns with the policies you implemented last year. It aligns with the Florida Department of Education's policies, and it addresses our very, very valid concerns. Again, what could be more important than the safety of our children? It's not just us. Consider the email from Roger Lloyd's colleague on the Transportation Review Committee sent to you last Friday, which exposes his blatant and deliberate disregard for the policies you worked hard to create during our Transportation Review Committee hearing, not to mention Roger Lloyd and Larry Stevens' failure to inform legal of the hearing and ensure a member of legal were in attendance. This information is crucial, and we implore each of you to review it and act in the best interest of your constituents. We voted you because we knew you'd be our voice. I'm looking at all of you, and I know your parents and grandparents, even great-grandparents. You're us. We need your voice. We need you to stand up for what is right and protect our kids. It is so unsafe. My son was riding on a Lee County school bus on Tree Line and was in a wreck on Tree Line. It's not a safe place, and that we put our kids out there is unimaginable, and I can't imagine any of you would do the same. So I beg you, please, make a motion, move our bus stop. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Sarah Braun, and I live in Beneath Springs. I'm an educator, a social worker with children and adolescents, and I'm here tonight because I am very concerned about the trend towards book banning and censorship in Florida in general and in Lee County in particular. I understand that this year, Lee County removed thousands of books from classrooms and school libraries at the request of a small minority of parents. I don't have to tell you that the vision statement of Lee County School District, which I love, is to be a world-class school system. I applaud the ambition behind that statement. However, if books are being banned by the thousands, if teachers are afraid to be creative, to share resources, to bring in new resources, then you don't have the foundation for a world-class school system. And if cultural diversity is minimized and the pool of books that reflect the cultural diversity in this community and in the world is being depleted, then we definitely don't have a world-class school system. I'm not exactly sure where the impetus to ban books begins, but I do know that people follow policies of censorship out of fear. I want to thank you for not adding unnecessary language to policy 3281 at your last board meeting, and I'm here to ask you, the policymakers of the Lee County School District, to please have the moral clarity and the courage to do the right thing even when other people aren't. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is John Leoni. I'm secretary on the Board of Directors at Marina Bay, and I'm here to tell you guys how concerned I am of the safety of our residents and our residents' children in this community at the bus stop on the corner. We have, I have gone to Ward Six meetings and spoke to our councilwoman directly and asked them to put a traffic signal at Plantation Boulevard, and I was told when the new apartments get occupied, and it could be up to five years before they do a traffic study, we'll never get the speed down on Tree Line if that isn't done. All of you guys were given video footage from last night or early this morning, video footage of the corner with the bus stop, showing the traffic in the morning, showing the kids getting on the bus. Some photos were stills also, and they were sent to you guys. I don't understand what the problem is here. We have a, we have a bus stop and a large parking lot that we've gotten tour buses in, we've gotten fire trucks in, we've gotten garbage trucks in this parking lot. They've gone around. All of you have been given the video footage, all of you have been given the report by Rich Cokely, and I would like to see some type of motion made soon so we can get our children safe. Because the city is not going to do a traffic study, and there's going to be no traffic lights on Tree Line for at least five years. And that's after they occupy the town center across the street from Marina Bay. So please, I beg of you, pass a motion, keep our children safe. We had, we had a school board member that looked at this location and actually agreed that it was perfect for the children. And our residents and my board that I'm on right now will give 120% to ensure the safety of our children. So please, pass the motion tonight. Thank you.
I wasn't going to talk about book banning, but I think I will. I think there were two books that have been taken out of the library, if I'm not misunderstanding since the time I've been here, and I have a dozen of them at home that I've read that are highly suggestive, sexually explicit, including bestiality, if anybody knows what that is. So before people wonder about the books, they should probably read them. But that's not what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. Tonight, you're scheduled to approve social studies textbooks that will cost the district over $9 million. Textbooks that, according to education law, written by your friend and campaign contributor, Senator Ray Rodriguez, Mr. Fisher, Mrs. Fleming, and Mr. Persons, and signed into law by our governor, that was also a contributor to Mr. Fisher and Mr. Persons, are supposed to be 100% free of critical race theory. Last March 2022, I emailed all of you an executive summary that I wrote for Florida Citizens Alliance after conducting a statewide social studies textbook review. I was responsible for half of the books. I received zero response from any of you. Then I tried to tell Mr. Persons about the review in another venue, and I was ignored. I suppose these reactions are because I had the courage to run against the Terry Miller, Matt Caldwell machine. The other group that failed to review their half of the books, those are the books that you now have on your agenda tonight. And I wonder if you have actually looked at these books to know that there is CRT in them? Well, I have, because Florida Citizens Alliance asked me to. So what I wonder is, were the administrators and teachers trained in critical race theory so when they were reading those books, they could say, no, we cannot bring these books into the district? One parent, one, was on the curriculum committee. Well, I remember campaign promises about having parents involved and eliminating CRT. And for those of you in the audience that think that our governor is divisive, what you need to know is that the law states that the textbooks may not, may not eliminate things like slavery, the Civil War, civil rights, the Holocaust, and contributions of African-Americans or Hispanic people. They may not eliminate those things. It does say that the idea that racism is inherent in American society may not be in those textbooks. So I'm asking you tonight, before you purchase these books, to table this matter, to review these books, and to look at the curriculum material that was provided to you during, when I submitted the executive summary last year, which was comprehensive, that could be purchased for less money than your.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
I'm here to speak on item 10 in your consent agenda. I communicated today with Ted Waller from the Florida Auditor, and I gave him all the information from your agenda. And just for knowledge, the last three operational audits that were conducted for the school district where they found statutory violations, many of the violations that were submitted were submitted by me. So I believe this is a violation, and they promised to look into it on the next operational audit. I find it troubling that the school district would have spent close to $10 million to prep a land, quadripleta, and includes costs for, with these two properties, I think these two properties are 1.5 and 2.5 million, and to turn around and to literally gift it. I don't care if it says lease, you're leasing a 99-year lease. The school district purchases properties to build schools. I was on the phone today with Dr. Browder, who was a superintendent here for many years in this school district, and he was just aghast about what was going on. He said, you should have surplus this property first, taken a vote on it, and then you could have done what you wanted to do. There weren't proper procedures taking place. And if you could do all this, and you can't fix a bus stop for families who are concerned about their children, that's a simple fix. So I expect you to take care of that tonight as well, please. And consider pulling this agenda item, because in two years, when the Florida Auditor comes around, they're going to come back, and you all are fully aware that you are gifting land to a sterile. So if you have land in Dunbar or in Lehigh, let's help them make a park as well. Let's be equitable. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Dr. Bernier and Mr. Huffman, is there anything you'd like to address regarding public comment at this moment?
Yes, sir, I would, if it's all possible. Mr. Juric, who started us off with AI, clearly, it is the issue of the future. There's no question about it. It's already here. It's not a future issue. It's a future issue. You don't have to stand, sir. Welcome to, if you would so like to, but you don't have to. Some of the statistics you provided, we are beginning to address AI in our code of conduct, but that's more along the lines of using it in a plagiaristic format or something like that. We have to continue to look at AI appropriately because it is going to impact the globe, what people do for a living, and how they make, how they make a living. I know I'm losing Ms. Ware, so I'm going to jump. All due respect to Marina Bay, you're here, and I know you're not leaving. I want the board to know that Ms. Ware contacted Dr. Cupid McCoy post this event that occurred at Harns Marsh Middle, and Dr. Cupid McCoy, along with the principal, have been working through this particular issue. There were members of the school staff that were struck by individuals during this fight. The striking of a school board employee, if I'm reading my board members correctly, is intolerable and not something that we can, not something that we can permit, no matter what the size, height, weight of an individual is. When a person asks students to stop fighting, that should be the end of it, and it should stop. And if they have to weigh in to support student safety and they get hit, that is a responsibility of the person throwing the punch. We will continue to look at this. I want to be clear that Dr. Cupid McCoy has been excellent in letting Ms. Ware know that she is not the parent or guardian of these two children. So it's really important we hold to having communications with the parents, and we will continue to do so. Mrs. Cox, thank you very much. The reading initiative that we're doing to try to support second-grade readers, reading by grade three, really is a K to, pre-K to two initiative. Second grade is probably the place you'll see it most right now, and we're very proud of the academic services team, Lassinger Center, PCG, and, and the work that, quite honestly, most of our second-grade teachers, kindergarten, first-grade teachers are doing. This is not work being given to teachers. This is teachers deciding how they're going to solve the problem and move the needle on regrade three, on reading by grade three. Board members, you may have noticed that when Ms. Carlos presented about ESE buses, the deputy superintendent at my direction stepped over. We're going to take a look at specifically what these routes are for the ESE students moving from there. When it comes to Marina Bay, Tree Line Avenue and Silver Ridge Road, that's the community entry road, I've been out there once. I did not come, as somebody suggested, because I didn't have the time to do it early one morning. My day starts early, but that's an excuse that I will solve tomorrow morning. I will make sure that I'm there to take a look. We do have state law. I know we're relying on a lot of other information, and I'm not saying I won't address this, because I will. I'll make sure that this gets addressed, and I'll let you know how I plan to address it, and then we can have further discussions. But there is a state law that does not require a school district to come inside a gated community, and the gentleman who presented on a planned community is absolutely correct. A planned community should engage with the school board, and the school board should engage with the planned community and develop a safe place for children to be outside of the gate. That is not how this planned community got put together. I understand that. Now, we have a problem to solve. I will be on it. I did get the emails. I have a beautiful three-ring binder now to take home tonight for bedtime reading. I will make sure I read it before tomorrow morning, and my computer, because it's being shifted, would not open the video today. I'm hopeful when I get back to my home computer, that video will open on, on your behalf, and I can take a look at that before arriving tomorrow morning. We will certainly take a look at this, and I'm going to ask my team to put some other things together regarding the other neighborhoods. Ms. Nystrom, thank you for your comments. Tonight, the policies, the books will not pass. Today is a public hearing specifically set up for people to provide input. I do want the community to know that the books that are being recommended to the board are on the state-approved list. We actually delayed social studies adoption to ensure that we will be only choosing books from that particular list that the state approves. We are responsible for choosing material that the state does, does have approved, so I want, I want to make sure we're clear on that. One more thing to the residents of Marina Bay. There was an error in the policy process regarding the appeal process for the particular bus stop. I'd like to thank Ms. Diva Gilly for bringing that issue to our attention. I'm addressing that with both my chief operations officer and the director of transportation. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow to go over it, and we will either make the change or we will make a change in how we administrate the policy of the school board. The legal department was not involved, and there was reference made to a former policy that was sunsetted under the development of a new one. So when mistakes are made, we admit those mistakes, we make the corrections. mistakes, we make the corrections, and we make sure that we're following the correct policies in the correct manner. As to the purchase and the consent items on, on number 10, I was looking it up because I wanted to make sure I had the right item, if you'll permit me, sir. When you see me looking down up here, it's because I'm taking copious notes, and that sometimes put me in a position, that would be L-10, correct?
Yes.
This is the approval of the shared lease, shared agreement with the Village of Astero regarding Astero's high school athletic facilities. Yes, there are two pieces of property that are involved in that. One is the purchase of a piece of property at 9350 Block Lane. That was purchased from the Newquist Family Trust for $2.65 million. It was paid for, or 10-plus acres, it was paid for by impact fees. The 9400 Block Lane was the other one that was purchased for 1.5, and that's related to impact fees as well. There's nothing in the state statute, having worked through these agreements with our attorneys and the school, and the town's attorneys, there's nothing in here that says we are violating any type of law allowing this land to be leased. We're also looking into this potentially for workforce housing, where we would lease, lease a land that could be given to a developer who could provide workforce, workforce location housing in those particular areas once we communicate with our local municipalities, because we certainly want to make sure they would support workforce housing in areas that where we may be able to do it. If we own land, we have some rights to do what we want to do with it, and we believe that this joint use to improve the athletic facilities, not only at Astero High School, but to also improve the community's athletic facilities, including making sure that they're open to all residents, not just the residents of Astero. This is open to all Lee County residents, and it will probably even be available for weekend tournaments and other things related to students as far away as Orlando if they're coming for a baseball, softball, or soccer tournament. So I would encourage us to move forward with the agenda that we have. Those are all the comments I have this evening. I believe, I believe, sir, I've covered the issues that came up this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorney Huffman, is there anything you'd like to address?
Mr. Chair, at this time, I do not have anything to add to the superintendent's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to point out, there was a comment in regards that we have banned thousands of books in Lee County School District. That is incorrect. So I just want to make sure that we have that on the record. I don't know if Dr. V. want to follow up on that.
I certainly can. I think it's important, numbers speak a lot. And yes, there have not been a number, thousands of books being banned, but there's been ongoing conversation regarding the classroom libraries. When the libraries started to have to be loaded into Beanstack for review, we loaded in 102,638 total books. By 9-2, with only 16 media professionals available to do the work, they had reviewed 8,300. By 10-3, they had reviewed 16,175. However, our teachers are still buying books. I think this is important for people to know. That total of books needing to be reviewed rose to 117, 1790, 790, my apologies, for an additional 15,152 books that our teachers purchased between 9-2 and 10-3. By 2-29, we had reviewed 56, 698 books, but another additional 10,000 books have been added to the review. So we are consistently making these reviews. These teachers, please understand, these media specialists work at night. They work outside of their regular day and weekends to complete this task, and we are, do believe, we're getting to the point where book titles are circulating again. So we've already made a review on a particular book title. As another teacher purchases it, it's an easier fix to move it forward into the collection. So I just think it's really important. The teachers have added 25,533 books since 9-2-23, when all the books had been loaded up for an original total of 102,638. Our teachers are still buying books. Children still have lots of access to it. We just need more certified media specialists to help us work on solving the volume issue, and we appreciate our teachers continuing to support classroom reading, not only in grades, pre-K to 3, but all the way through their senior year and their point of graduation. Thank you.
Thank you for the follow-up, sir. I appreciate it. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out for public comment. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. At this moment, we're going to move on to approval of the action items in the consent agenda. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material we have, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or worksop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or table items? First off, Ms. Juvenelli.
Yes, I'm going to ask to pull L-9 and L-10.
Okay, L-9 and L-10. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. So is there a motion to approve the items, consent action items, with the exception of the polled items, which were L-9 and L-10, correct? Do we have a motion? Ms. Jordan?
I, I move to adopt the agenda with the exception of L-9 and L-10 as written.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Jordan, seconded by Mr. Persons. Please vote, please record Motion carries 6-0. Before we proceed on to the unfinished business and table items, Dr. Bernier, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment approved under the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Members of the board, members of the public, as human resources is being retooled for the future, that one of our guest speakers told us so eloquently tonight, the world of AI, it was necessary for our employee relations team and our human resources team to move on and develop a new team. As you know, Angela Montomorano is our new chief of human resources. She's here this evening. She's not one of the new appointees. I would like to recognize at this time Mary Hammer, who will be joining the talent management group as the director of talent management. I'd also like to recognize Christine Schroed, who will be joining Labor and Employee Relations as the director of Labor and Employee Relations. I'd like to recognize Paula Kemmerer. She will be joining Human Resource Operations as the manager of Human Resource Operations. And finally, with your actions tonight, Suzette Rivera will be joining the human, will move up within the Human Resources team, becoming the executive director of Human To those individuals appointed tonight, I can tell you how much this board is counting on you and the direction of Angela Montomorano. We really need to do even a better job than we're already doing, securing and finding staff, working on the retention issue. And when you think about a talent management process where we really work to ensure that people understand their value and their purpose and impact, and then to open up a division or another part of the team in employee relations. We have always had a professional standards department, but you interact with them when you're in trouble. Employee relations is about building a relationship between the central office, the school sites, and the staff. Excited about the future of this school district and the difference it can bring to make sure that our vacancies are much better moving into the new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Congratulations to everyone. It's truly appreciate all the work you do and the work you will do. I'm hoping that you all have a great night. I'm going to continue to echo what Mr. Persons said. Just make sure you're here in the morning tomorrow. So everyone, if they want to go, they're dismissed at this moment. So at this time, we're going to move on to the polled items. So that would be L-9 and L-10. So for L-9, Dr. Bernier?
Mr. Chair, the recommended action is the approval of the land dedication agreement for .83 plus-minus acres of the Tower Road property with the city of Bonita Springs and BG Mine LLC. BG, BGM shall pay the school board a dedication fee. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all documents. The district is dedicating 8.3 acres of Tower Road property, 40-plus acres, to the city of Bonita. We've done this in the past with right-of-ways and turn lanes where there's a minimum impact to the property we already own, leaving it for the opportunity to still continue to use it as a school property to build a school on. The city of Bonita is pursuing the necessary entitlements to construct improvements to the existing Bonita Grand Drive northeast of Terry Street that will serve as a city park and the public in BG Mine's property. The action will allow necessary infrastructure improvements. The effective date shall mean the date when the last one of the three parties has signed the agreement. BGM shall pay the school board a dedication fee as defined for a dedicated property, which shall be delivered to the school board by wire transfer. The dedication fee is equal to the greater of $150,000 or the appraised value of the dedicated property. So that's the recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Board members, is there a motion to adopt Dr. Bernier's recommendation for item L-9? Ms. Jordan?
I move that we adopt Dr. Bernier's for approval of the land dedication agreement, L-9.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Morgan?
Okay, item is moved by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Morgan. Do we have any discussion?
I'll be brief. I'm a realtor, so I just, I have a hard time giving away property or releasing property or dedicating property or any piece of property. I find the, I personally find value in it. When you start chiseling away at property and giving a piece of it here and a piece of it there, then it lessens the value of what you really have. I believe that when I see, we don't, we aren't doing this in other parts of the county, and I would like to see more of that, being more equitable in other parts of the county versus in Astero. So I just am not going to support this tonight, and I'll just leave it at that. I don't expect a lot of conversation. We don't have to prolong this, but I just wanted to say my piece, and that's it. Thank you.
This, this was the Bonita one, right, L-9?
Yeah, it's the, it's the .3 acres or whatever.
Yeah, just wanted to confirm based on your comments, so.
Yes.
Okay.
I know I've talked about a couple things.
Okay, I just, just for the record, for the minute, so. Do we have any other comments? Anybody else? Okay, anything else you need to add, Dr. Bernier?
Nothing other than just to remind that this, we're not giving the piece of property away. We'll either receive a dedication fee of $150,000 or the value of the appraised value of this .83 acres.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, then we're going to move to a roll call vote. So, yes, of course.
Just, but for the record, we never discussed this being a piece of surplus land, correct? We never talked about this being surplus.
We did not talk about it being surplus because we're not getting rid of the entire piece of property. We've done this before, and you have approved particular items that have occurred in Cape Coral and other places where we've built an easement based upon releasing part of a piece of property, or we've provided access and area for turn lanes.
Right. Is that, but that's not what's being, this is not going to be a turn lane?
This is about road improvements and the things necessary for the entitlements to construct improvements to the existing Bonita Grand Drive north of East Terry Street.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else before we move on to roll call vote? Okay, seeing none. Be a roll call vote. Mrs. Juvenelli?
No.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so motion carries 5-1. Next up will be item L-10. Dr. Bernier, please read your recommendation for the said polled item.
The recommended action is the approval of the lease and shared use agreement with the Village of Astero for the development of Astero High School athletic facilities into a shared sports complex. Approval authorize the superintendent to execute the related documents. The approval of the lease and standard agreement with the Village of Astero for the development of Astero High School athletic facilities into a shared sports complex is a 99-year lease with the Village of Astero to provide the 54-plus acres that comprises the Astero High School athletic facilities to the Village of Astero for the construction, development, and maintenance of a community sportsplex. The shared use agreement codifies the prioritization of Astero High School athletics and access to the community sports complex only when not in use by Astero High School or its students. The village is obligated to contribute no less than $10 million in the next five years to the agreement to the development of these facilities. The initiative highlights the district's commitment to maximizing resources, enhancing athletic opportunities for both Astero High School and the broader community.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt Dr. Bernier's recommendation for item L-10? Mr. Persons?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt his recommendation for L-10, the agreement with the city of Astero.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Motion moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Langford Fleming. Do we have any discussion?
Again, I'll be brief, because I've asked questions about this in the past, but I just had a hard time with the 99-year lease. I kind of mentioned that before. I don't believe we should be landlords, and we didn't decide to surplus this land, and this land was purchased for, specifically for the Innovation School K8, which I know is now being moved, and we pivoted to somewhere else. But the fact that we specifically was directed to buy this property to, in joint with Astero City Council, and then that plan did not come to fruition, and we pivoted without really talking about a plan and having things in place for the future with the 10-year plan, and I, so I just, again, my realtor hat, I decide, I decided I just can't support this at this time. Thank you, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Do we have any other board comment? Go ahead, Mr. Persons.
Yeah, I just think this is a great situation. First off, they're giving us 10 million, which is great, but that's only a drop in the bucket compared to the maintenance over 99 years, and the building of the additional facilities will be much more than 10 million, I can guarantee that. So I think it's a very good deal for the district for that reason.
Anybody else? Board comments? Any, anything you'd like to add, Dr. Bernier?
No, sir.
I agree. In regards to this, I hope, and we talk about Astero, I hope this model, though, is used in other places in the county. So I, I agree with that part very much. So seeing no other discussion, correct? We're going to go to a roll call vote. So item L-10, we will start with Ms. Juvenelli.
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries 5-1. At this point, we're going to move into public hearings. Dr. Bernier, please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, item Q1 is the approval to conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed 2024-2025 instructional materials plan for social studies.
We'll now recess the school board meeting and open the public hearing. The time is 7:24 PM. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to receive public comment on the proposed 2024-2025 instructional materials plan for social studies. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for public comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the proposed 24-25 instructional materials plan for social studies? Please Please also state your name for the record.
Denise Nyström. Dr. Bernier, thank you for explaining what you explained to me. I actually appreciate it. I did actually already know that, and I know exactly what happened up at FLDOE, and I know how many people were given information, including the commissioner and so on, about what was in those books. Unfortunately, a lot of the senior reviewers are putting books with CRT through. They just simply are, okay? Florida Citizens Alliance asked if we could re-review the books that we had initially reviewed to see if the publishers would update them accordingly. We were refused. And the other thing is that it is within your purview to purchase any materials that you want. You do not have to go with the books that are on the state-approved list. So I'm saying once again, I'm asking you to table it and review it. So, I'm saying once again, I'm asking you to table it and review it. I know you've already held off for a long time, but there is critical race theory in those books, and they will be in the hands of our children. Now, I know not everybody really cares too much about that, but I do, and I know that some of you do also. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to comment on the social studies textbooks? Okay. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting of March 5, 2024. The time is 7:26 PM. Dr. Bernier or Attorney Huffman, is there anything you'd like to address regarding the public hearing?
I think the only thing I'd like to do is respond. I may have misspoken. Ms. Nystrom, you're right. We don't have to pick from the state list. There's a lot of-- my recommendation, though, to the board is to stay within the state list. There's a lot of safety involved in the current climate to ensure that we're adopting from the state-approved adopted materials.
Thank you. Attorney Huffman?
I have nothing to add at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. So, now we're moving on to item R, good of the order, other business. So, board member comments and reports, and I promised I will start with Erica, so.
Before I want to start, I want to thank my principal, Mr. Scott Cook, for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Riverdale High School. During the pandemic, my parents made the ultimate decision of moving from New York City to Fort Myers, Florida. Only being the Lee County School Department since my freshman year in 2020, I haven't been capable of witnessing the dramatic changes over the years, but I've seen many similarities and differences compared to the New York City Department of Education. For the last four years, I had the opportunity of being the International Baccalaureate Program, a program only offered in about a dozen schools in the entire New York State. I truly believe that I have had a much better high school experience with Lee County than I would have had in New York. The IB program requires me to take rigorous college-level courses, which has allowed me to be prepared for college, if not more. About every high school in Lee County holds the option of taking advanced programs that would allow-- that would aid towards bright futures. It would be my hope that all students, whether in IB, ACE, or general education classes, receive high-quality instruction. Whether or not a student is in advanced classes in New York, they are placed in a program of their interest that will prepare them for other, their specified occupation or college. Being a general education student in middle school when I was in New York, the teachers never saw a difference between honor students and those in general education. They always held the same expectations. Now, having friends who have never been in IB, I notice that teachers not teach all of the same standards. I understand that general education students are not supposed to be taught at the same level as IB or ACE, but it's essential that all students are taught basic life skills that students are supposed to develop over the four years of high school. These skills might be like public speaking and time management. From the moment students step into their freshman year, the idea of moving into adulthood should be on their mind. I'm not saying college because I understand that college isn't for everyone, but they should need-- they need to create life skills that they need to be successful in the future. Productivity, communication skills, time management, the list goes on. High school teachers in Lee County School Department should require their students to learn about public speaking and present their ideas. They should be taught how to turn in assignments on time and not push back the due dates just for them. They need to learn the importance of how assignments work, as having a job in the future will not prove a half-done job. With the lack of these skills, our generation and future generations will not be successful as everyone believes it will. I believe that having motivational teachers, it will create motivated students, and with motivated students, we can create an environment of students who are prepared for adulthood the moment they receive their diploma. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate your comments. Now, we're going to move on to-- we'll go the opposite end and keep on that end, if that's all right, Ms. Morgan.
Well, first, thank you, Erica. As a former New Yorker, I enjoy hearing your perspective on things, so thank you. And I'm just going to add a little bit of context, I think, to this conversation about books. There are two, essentially, two things going on. One is the challenge. The challenge is when somebody in the community says, "We don't like a book, and we want you to review it and see whether or not it belongs on the bookshelves." We've had a number of books challenged, but I would say it's probably is 100? A good guess? Maybe more? No, a lot more. Oh, fewer. Okay. And I know we've only, I think, pulled altogether two books, right? Something like that. Anyway, sorry, I'm diverting attention. But the other thing that's going on, and when people talk about pulling books, that's really about the Department of Education requirement that every single book we have in our media centers and in our classrooms be reviewed. And we're-- we've not been told to pull books off the shelves. We've been told to review every book that is on the shelves, and that takes time, and that takes staff. We have 12 staff who are certified to do it. They work at night. They work on weekends. So, when we say that we've, you know, we reviewed 56,000 books, I think that's pretty awesome, but we have probably 60,000, 70,000 more to go. It's not because the books have been challenged, it's because we are required, we're obligated to have every single book that every child sees reviewed by a media specialist. So, I just wanted to make that differentiation for members of the public, and those are my comments this evening. And really, delightful to have you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Langford Fleming?
Erica, I walked over to Erica and introduced myself, and she's glowing about only having a month left of school, so. I am excited for you, and are your parents here in the-- okay. They have raised a wonderful, a wonderful young lady. You're going to do great. My son, his freshman year made his very best friend now was a New Yorker, and he moved here for the same exact reason you described, and you've brought a lot of culture, I'm sure, and your friends, I'm sure adore you. To our public comment, thank you to everyone who came out. I echo what our chair has said. We do appreciate, we do hear you, even if we don't make comment every time. Mr. Urick, you are correct. This is a-- this is a crucial issue. This is something that weighs on my mind when I see our children constantly on iPads and constantly on Chromebooks and not turning pages and not handwriting and thing-- and I-- listen, I'm bringing out the elementary teacher in me. It's good to see those tangible things in children's hands, to be able to manipulate things, and there's things that technology bring to the table, but then there's times that we need to take a step back and get back to some classical learning, which I talked about for 18 months on the trail. Ms. Cox, I don't think she's here in the audience, but thank you for your volunteer hours and to what you do for the students at the school that you work in. I know that we've already addressed the ESC bus situation. Before I get to my final comment, I do want to say we-- I believe Dr. Bernier's code of conduct coming next month? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I can't remember.
I know it's due in the next two regularly scheduled workshops.
Okay. Thank you. Something that's been weighing on my mind with my school visits in secondary, and Mr. Persons touched on this today, something I've been wanting to bring up, is how his students in Tallahassee dress for success. And I do believe that we need to take a closer look at our code of conduct and our dress code. I've just walking the halls of some of our high schools who are young adults, who are wanting us to treat them like young adults and then preparing for adulthood. I think it's something we need to take a look at, and them seeing themselves as young adults, dressing a little more professionally, just something I think we need to tighten up, if you will. To our Marina Bay community, thank you. I've read every single email that you have sent. I'm sorry I didn't get to the video because it would not pull up. I think it has something to do with our laptop switching over. But I just want you to-- I want you all to know where I stand on this issue. I have three children. I live in a community with-- that is now because I'm a seventh-generation Floridian. Crazy. But I have seen our community explode. We do not have the infrastructure for the traffic that is here, especially during season, and I live on a road myself now where traffic is-- they're using it as a cut-through, if you will. So, we have people going down a 20-mile-hour road at 40 miles an hour, so I understand where you're coming from. I don't care if there's one kid standing at a bus stop or if there's 20 kids standing at a bus stop. I just want to make it very clear where I stand on this issue for direction of the superintendent and his staff, that every kid matters. Safety is my number-one priority when it comes to our children, and it doesn't-- that doesn't always mean inside the school building. It means before the school, after the school, and even on the weekends. And I felt that way when I was a classroom teacher as well. So, I'm just charging transportation and the superintendent to meet the needs of the community in this issue in the best way that we can to keep these children safe. I know we can think outside of the box. I know our transportation department can put heads together and make this happen. Other than that, I have no further comments.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Moving on to Mr. Persons.
Erica, you sound like you should be a teacher.
I know.
Okay. I know. See, I mean, that's-- you say we need good teachers. Might want to think about that. On Marina Bay, I will echo what Ms. Langford Fleming said. You know, there can be two things. One, the bus stop can meet the state standards and say it's safe, but it also can be that the bus stop inside can be looked at as even safer. And when given two choices, I would like to see more of the safest choice available. Now, I don't know about the turnaround, exactly how far you have to go. I mean, 90 seconds one way, turn around, 90 seconds back the other way. It adds to it. There's obviously there, and that the superintendent's going to look at, and he'll make his recommendation. But I think we all say we want student safety as our number-one priority above learning. Okay? So, that's-- I think he knows how we feel, and that's why he's going to check out everything. I talked earlier about taking some kids to Tallahassee last week. That was fun. Tomorrow might be even more fun. I am a kindergartner chaperone, so. And it may be raining, so it could really be interesting. And then we'll be reading the next two days to several schools. So, it's a lot of fun things we'll get to do as board members, and I'm looking forward to that. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. Erica, thank you so much for being here. I loved listening to you, and you are on student advising, right? Okay. I knew I-- I knew you from there, so thank you for being here and sharing with us because you-- you do speak when you're at the student advising, so you continue to do that. Also, Harnes Marsh Middle School Orchestra, I really wanted to give them a shout-out. They did an excellent job. I watched them this past weekend as well, and then seeing them again here tonight was really great. I guess Marina Bay, I think they've-- my colleagues have pretty much spoken the same words I would say as well, and I know Dr. Bernier will be looking into it further for us, and we will be coming back. And I did have an opportunity to watch the video, so I have read that, and I was able to-- they had problems with their computers. I had not, but I did see that, and I have not yet been out there. But seeing the darkness, I do see that. Not just there, I see that everywhere in Lee County. So, if we could make it where all of our kids, you know, had the lights when they needed it, that would be an amazing task. But thank you for, you know, your advocacy and for continuing to come, and I gave the rest of my comments this afternoon, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. I'll be brief as well. I am concerned about the safety after the close-- what was the thing we attended on Friday? Close-up with our students. They're-- they are in fear every day at school just because of the safety of everything going around them, going on around them, the uncertainty of that. And when students aren't safe, they aren't learning. So, I think it's important that we address this. This has been ongoing since before, I believe, Christmas, and here we are in March, and this hasn't been resolved. And it's really about student safety, and we have the ability to make that right. And yet, I don't want to see this go another month out and not-- and if, God forbid, something would have happened to a student and then we could have prevented that, it caused me to be very alarmed and causes me to pause and question, how much longer is this going to be prolonged before a definite answer and procedures and protocols being followed to get to the right answer? That is the other issue, and that's a whole nother conversation that I can have with the superintendent. I am-- I've thought about this, and I'm going to make a motion tonight to direct the superintendent to move the Marina Bay's bus stop to the designated pavilion at the clubhouse. And I can do it formally for the attorney, but I'm going to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to have the transportation go into-- transportation bus stop be in the Marina Bay community to the designated bus stop at the pavilion at the clubhouse.
So, motion on the table. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Jordan. Motion moved by Ms. Juvenelli and seconded by Ms. Jordan, and that, again, to clarify the motion would be to move the bus stop within the Marina Bay community within development?
Yes.
Okay.
It's at the clubhouse.
At the clubhouse. Do we have any discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chair, we do have to open it up to public comment now that there has been a motion.
Yes. I forgot about that, so. Okay. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make public comment in regards to said motion? So, please proceed to the lectern. Would be-- What? Would be three minutes.
Yes, three minutes, and please ensure to provide your name prior to speaking.
All right. My name is India Palencia. I live in Marina Bay. I know Dr. Bernier had mentioned earlier about a state law that said that there's no requirement for them to go into the gated communities, and I understand that there's no requirement, but there's also nothing that I have been able to find in the last few minutes while looking through Florida state law and state statute that bars them from going into them, or they wouldn't go into Botanica Lakes, or they wouldn't go into Colonial Country Club. So, our ask is that we just get treated the same as our neighbors. Our kids are safe. To me, it's a very, very, very simple solution and a very easy one to make. I understand that there are challenges with the buses because my son rides the bus. I get it. When the woman was up here talking about the ESC bus, my kid's on an ESC bus every morning, so I get it. We get communications that the bus is running late after my kid gets picked up late. So, you know, we get it. We get there's complications with the buses and that there's timing issues, but ultimately, every one of you have talked about the safety of our kids being paramount. It's the number-one thing, and I think we're all on the same page with that. Like, I think we can all agree on that, right? The safety, it's about safety. So, if it's about safety, it's a very simple choice. It's a very simple decision to make. There is one option that is the better option, and it's our school bus stop in the community. And I understand it's .4 miles away, one way, so it's a .8-mile round trip, three minutes added to the bus route, but I think that those three minutes and that .8 miles is well worth the safety of our kids. It's got to be made. The decision is very simple in my eyes, and I really hope that you consider that. I really, I really hope you do. I know, I look at all of you. I've read all your bios. I hope that you can see the due diligence that we've done. We do our homework. We made sure that we were looking at this correctly. We looked at the laws, and we looked at the statutes and said, "Are we crazy? Like, is it just us? Are we imagining this?" But we're not, and everyone I talk to about it is like, "Wow, that should be a no-brainer." And every time I walk out of here, I'm like, "Wow, that was a slam dunk. It was a no-brainer," and we come back yet again with the same answer. I'm begging you, please, just make this right for our kids. You're our voice. We voted for you guys because we knew that you would be, and I know that you guys are like lifelong Fort Myers residents, and you're pillars in our community. Please stand up for us, be the voice for our kids. I'm asking you. Thank you.
My name is Erica King Gannas. I just wanted to say how important it is that we don't wait on this and vote in the future. Our kids at Marina Bay, they're the future. They're our future generation. They're our future lawyers, doctors, teachers, principals, board members. And we've told them as parents that they can be whomever they want to be, and their teachers have supported them in that. teachers have supported them in that. And you all have spent an exorbitant amount of your energy into making sure that you provide them with the best education, so that they can be their future selves, whoever that is, and have that dream job that they want to receive. But it's just the unfortunate reality that if this bus stop is not moved, that is going to be impossible for a child that lives at Marina Bay, because they're not going to make it to their graduation. They're not going to have their dream job, because they can't get on their school bus safely. And we're really asking you to make this change before tragedy strikes. So, please, please move our bus stop. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment. Dr. Bernier mentioned that the planned community requirement was legitimate, that it just needs to be a bus stop coordinated with the school board, but that that should be compliant with a bus stop outside of the community, consistent with, I guess, today's policy. Well, the planned community we're talking about for Marina Bay was a 2005 plan, and the coordination happened at that timeframe. The coordination ended up with our neighboring part of the same development, which we were going to be part of the same development. They only deferred our community because of the real estate market in 2008. It wasn't feasible for the developer to do it all at that time, so we were delayed development. But the planning for all that was done back with a plan that was established in 2005, and in fact, the same as the community that was, is grandfathered, the community north of us, the Botanica Lakes community, built by the same developer, built on the same criteria. This, this, the school department has grandfathered that community, and because, I guess, they had an established bus stop. Well, if the basis for that is the, is the plan that we developed our bus stop on is the same as the plan they developed on, then why aren't we also grandfather it under the same criteria? In any event, there is a bus stop that's very safe versus the one that's not, not safe outside the community, and we should take advantage of that. Thank you.
Each and every one of you have a chance to avoid a tragedy, okay? These children are out there 5:30 in the morning, sometimes even earlier, to catch a bus while traffic's going over 50 miles per hour. The city has been very upfront, saying that the traffic study won't be done for, at least until the town apartments are fully occupied, which is going to take at least five years. So, the speed limit average right now is about 55, not 45. There's no police on the road. The response to that area is always delayed. Avoid a tragedy. Vote yes, because it will be on all your consciences if something happens. Thank you.
Sir, if you could please state your name.
John Leoni. I'm on the Marina Bay Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for this time. My name is Jennifer Kearns, and I'm with Marina Bay. Dr. Bernier, thank you. I, I'm sorry, I was a little disheartened to hear some of your response earlier. You said, "I'll do a visit. State law doesn't require us to come in. I'll look into it." Frankly, Ms. Juvenelli and Ms. Jordan's motion is action tonight. Action that you can take tonight. There really isn't anything to look into. There isn't a lot to look into. It's moving a bus stop from here to here. I understand there's logistics that are surrounded with doing that action, but that's the decision that needs to be made tonight, and then the logistics of it can be handled Please take action tonight. You all have that power to do this. We're asking you. And we're going to keep coming to every meeting, and we're going to keep growing, and we're going to take up half the room. Thank you.
This is a very easy, very simple answer. Like, this is a very easy thing, and I'm very disappointed so far watching. I was sitting here watching and waiting, and as I'm watching, I'm waiting for someone to make a motion, and it had to get all the way to Melissa before a motion was made. Thank you, Debbie, for giving it a second there, because I was getting ready to get up and walk out of this room had a second not been made. I would have been extremely disappointed in all of you. Now, this is the process that is in the policy. They're following the process. Y'all are the next step in the process. Please do something about this. What is the answer if you don't? That what, they just go back to doing what? To complaining about this? They've already been through the TRC. They shouldn't have to go through it again. It is not their fault that things were not done the right way in the first TRC. It doesn't need to be repeated. You guys are here now. You can make this decision. You have the authority to make this decision. Please do not put this on the superintendent. He doesn't need to make this decision. Y'all have the authority to do this. This is one of the times you get to be the good guy. Please be the good guy in this situation. Please do not act like whatever board member it was, that whomever it was here earlier, mentioned that thought, went to the bus stop and thought it was safe. I don't know which one of you that was. I'm going to maybe guess it's the person that's not here today. But please, do the right thing in this situation, for the love of everything. Please, please, please. I don't want to waste the last minute and a half of my time here just begging you guys to do the right thing, but this is one of those moments when you get to just do the right thing. And it's not going to hurt anyone. It's not going to set a precedence. Every community isn't going to come barking up your ear, because they want this done there next. This is one community that it's already been grandfathered in, in their extension. The evidence is overwhelming. I've been to that bus stop. It is extremely dangerous. And if you'd like to know where that committee thinks that it's a safe place for them to sit, it's on the little grassy knoll that's right above the sign. They, that, they think that that's appropriate. That's not appropriate. That's not appropriate for anyone's children to sit up near the sign. That's not a bus stop. If there's not a bus stop there, put the kids in the community where the bus stop is. Please and thank you. Sorry if you're being a little loud. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to make comment on this motion? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move to board discussion. So, Mr. Persons, followed by Ms. Morgan.
We have many bus stops all along where I drive every morning along Bay Shore. They're going 55 miles an hour, and the bus stops on the road and picks up kids. Winkler, right out here, is 45 mile-an-hour speeds on there, going over that, and they're picking up kids. Again, I think, I would like, because I don't know, I hear from y'all what's, is out, outside, and that there's a place inside, but there's more to the logistics of driving the bus into and turning around. Do they have to back up? Can they just do a complete circle? And, you know, I, I need to look more at that. I, I have not seen, I've not been inside, and I would not want to make a decision tonight for that reason. I think that's the superintendent's going to go. I think if he thinks it should be moved, he has the authority to move it right away. But I would like to, if he wants more feedback from us, he should bring it back to us, and then we can make a decision there. But I just, I don't like telling the superintendent what to do when I don't know exactly. We get one side all the time of issues, but there's always two sides to every issue. And I had a child that was hit and killed less than a quarter mile from my house, and that's on a 30 mile-an-hour road. She's walking, she's walked her child, I mean, her sister to the bus stop and was walking back home on the side of the road early in the morning. There's lots of bus stops, you know, that we need to look at and make as safe as possible. And if it's safer, you'll have my vote to move it. But I, I don't feel until the superintendent has a chance to look at it, because he's in charge of the operations. When we elect a superintendent, they'll be making this decision. We only will be funding it or making a policy. You know, I mean, it's, it's just, just where we are, you know, as a, as a board. And so, for that reason, I think we should hold back until the superintendent has a chance to look and then make a recommendation if, if, if he wants one, or if he wants to take a change. That's all.
Next up, Ms. Morgan.
So, I'm going to follow along with what Mr. Persons had to say. My question to the board is, what's good governance? Good governance is allowing the superintendent, who is responsible for district administration, to make a decision with respect to this issue. He has already said he will visit the site. He has said that he and Attorney Dupuy Bruno, or a member of her staff, is going to discuss this situation further. We don't, as a matter of course, take motions without prior notice to the board, so that board members have an opportunity to consider what's taken place. So, what Dr., Mr. Persons said is correct. The superintendent has the ability to make this decision. The board doesn't need to override the superintendent or undermine the superintendent at this point, because he hasn't made a recommendation. I think it is on us to give him the opportunity to do his job, to provide oversight to the people who have done this work underneath him, and to come back to, he doesn't even need to come back to the board. He can make whatever recommendation he wants, and if we don't like the recommendation, we can override him at that point. I, I can't support one of these last-minute motions. I'm sorry. I can't. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Board members, question, Ms. Langford Fleming?
Through the chair to the super, would you mind explaining, just for public and the community that's here, what is entailed in going and doing a site visit? How long something like this would take to be able to, on a dime? If you go out and you see that this is, in fact, an unsafe environment for our students, how quickly can we make that happen in transportation?
Since I would be abiding by your policies, I could make that decision tomorrow. Like Mr. Persons, I would share that I have been out there. I've not been out there at the time that they're suggesting I be out there. I want to take a look at the light pole that hasn't been, hasn't been replaced, from my understanding. I want to know who's responsible for replacing that light post, whether that exists on a public side, or whether that's a responsibility of the community. It all, you know, it all depends on how the deeds and restrictions are done. But, you know, there's, there's a lot to look at. Happy to do so. I think there's two things, that answers your question, Ms. Fleming.
So, my question is, I, I do feel similarly to, out of respect to our superintendent, to my two colleagues, I do also feel that this is a priority and should be taken care of tomorrow by staff. I have a hard time voting yes on a motion that was just thrown out instead of 24 hours, just so that we can, I mean, I may even want to go out there tomorrow at 5:30 in the morning, and now I don't have a chance to if, if, if it doesn't pass or does pass. So, it's not that I don't support a change being made, and a change sooner than later is what my comment should have said. But I think it's really important that not just this, this trap, that you got, you all are just such a great example of multiple stops throughout our community, that Mr. Persons said, and you're being actually a voice for thousands of kids who stand at unsafe bus stops, and something that we all need to address. But I do have...
I, I have to weigh in.
Please do.
We do not have thousands, we do not have thousands of bus stops
Thank you.
in our community where children are unsafe. Bus stops are selected very carefully through a process. This community has brought to us a very specific opinion as to what they believe is the situation to their children. It warrants me, not staff, going out tomorrow morning to see what they're telling me, so I can put my eyes on it. I think I know a hazardous condition when I see it. I mean, and I do believe that it is in the purview of the superintendent to utilize your policies, and if my staff can't reach a conclusion, I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Jordan?
I would like for Dr. Bernier to do that first thing in the morning, to go out there. Well, if you can, I can't.
I've already stated that I would go. I don't, I don't think I need to be directed beyond that. I have to be candid. I've already said I will go tomorrow morning.
I am not demanding that you go anywhere. I'm just saying, I appreciate the fact that you are willing to do that. And also, I just want to make sure, too, with Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Stevens, they are following guidelines as well. So, I know they're not trying to do anything for malice or anything like that, so I have to say that, because I felt like it was assumed that they were doing something just because they were doing it. But I know that they are following what they believe was correct. So, I just wanted to share that as well. But I absolutely, I know I will go out there as well, and I would rather this be taken care of sooner than later. Again, this, I seconded, so we could have conversation, but I know that we do have our policies that we are, that we try, our protocol that we try to adhere to as well, as far as motions. But I would really like to see this take place very, very soon. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. My apologies to the board about bringing this motion up last minute, but after hearing their appeal to us, as well as the students, I thought about the safety thing today, the students feeling safe. This is really all as it is, is a safety issue. However, the superintendent did recognize that staff did not follow policy. They were looking at an older policy. So, that was misrepresented in the, in the review committee, to the review committee. That's a problem. And unfortunately, now, it's become the superintendent's problem that, because the information and the processes weren't followed properly, like we expected it to be, but based on our policy. So, you know, staff didn't follow policy, and now I'm not following protocol. So, it just kind of sometimes happens that way. But at this point, I was thinking about pulling my motion back, but I'm going to go ahead and let, let the motion fail, because I think it's important that we not prolong something that's been going on since before December, in December. And that's where it's at today. That's the reason why I didn't make the motion, because how long is it going to go on where these people have to come and, and advocate for safety for their children? And that's just where I'm at. It's a matter of safety. So, I will not be pulling my motion. I'll speak it again when the, when I'm asked to. Thank you. But, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. So, and I truly, truly understand and appreciate your concerns to the Marina Bay residents. As I mentioned up here, I have three kids, two young kids, especially in this district. And my son, back in elementary school, one of the issues that I got involved with was city government, was because of his bus stop and not having lights over in Cape Coral, as well as the speed limit. So, I truly do understand that, so. But with this information at hand, I am, I'm not ready, because there are consequences to this. So, I'm not saying that I'm not going to support this later on, but I agree. I think this is in the domain of our superintendent. And again, that's not saying we're not going to do anything, but protocol, like we talk about in doing it the right way, safety, as I said, I understand, I truly do. I've experienced this, so. But we need to make sure we're doing the right thing. I'd actually entertain a motion to table this at the moment from somebody.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I did want to address, it's been alluded to during some of the comments by the board during this discussion, as to whether this is in the purview of the board to make a decision, or the purview of the superintendent. And Statute 1001.51 dictates that the duties and responsibilities of the district superintendent is to be responsible for directing the work of personnel subject to the requirements of Chapter 102. It does further state in Chapter 1001.42, the powers of the board for transportation of students, that after considering recommendations of the district's school superintendent, the board can make provision for the transportation of students to public schools. So, at this point, I would agree with the comments that were made by various board members during this discussion, that the purview of this decision does lie within the superintendent. Thank you.
I would then ask for the motion to be withdrawn.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Dr. Bernier, do we have the understanding? Have you gotten the guidance from this board on what you need for the next steps?
Crystal clear, based upon the community's input and the board's input, what's expected of me tomorrow morning, very early in the morning. Yes, sir. And being able to render a decision, come back, deal with staff, and also advise you as to implications regarding the overall transportation system.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bernier, and thank you for discussion, as Ms. Juvenelli. Thank you, Dr. Bernair, and thank you for discussion, as Ms. Juvenelli. Is there anything else you wish to add to board member comment, or go to the order at this point, since you've withdrawn?
No, this was enough. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Persons?
I believe technically we also have to withdraw the second.
Yes.
In order to withdraw the motion.
Okay. Was that Ms. Jordan?
I will withdraw my second.
For the record, you've withdrawn the second, Ms. Jordan. Okay. First and second. Thank you, Mr. Persons. So, and, you know, again, you know, I mentioned, thank you to Marina Bay for coming out here. Thank you for your continued dialogue. We do, we get it, so, and we are listening. I do want you to know that, and for the rest of the community as well. So, kind of shift gears. I was able to attend the, or be involved with the Taste of the Cape this past weekend, which was a nonprofit fundraiser between the Gulf Coast Symphony, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, which helps raise money for scholarships for kids within our school district. I thought that was an amazing event. So much like many of you, I have written my favorite book, Oh, The Places You Will Go, to read this week. I went to Pelican with many of you, had a fantastic time there. It was really interesting. One of my favorite things is, I always ask after that, especially the difference between, I talk, multiple first grade classes, I did than a fourth grader, I always ask them, what do you want to do when you grow up? So definitely some interesting things, a lot of teachers, so I told them, we're going to, we're going to sign them up once they get out there, Dr. B. So I also, one of the interesting ones I heard a lot was YouTuber, so I thought that was an interesting one, so that went well. I also spoke at, or read at Diplomat this morning, and they provided me this cool little Reader Rock. I thought that was neat. I also got questioned about my profession by some fourth graders at Diplomat, was really amazing. I got to go through and kind of explain how school board works, and how we represent them, and how superintendent. So I did promise them that I would let the board know and the superintendent, and they said they don't like the change in the nacho chips, so that was, I wanted to convey that to everyone. So I'm going to be, with many others, speaking, or reading the rest of this week. Last thing I want to add is I also went to the Golden Apple Social. I thought that was really great, and it was great to see many of our current participants and past participants. So I just, again, that's all I have at the moment. I will move on to Attorney Huffman, if you have any comment.
I don't have anything from a legal perspective, but one of my favorite aspects of attending these board meetings is seeing the participation and hearing from the student representatives. I love seeing the students get involved in their school district. And Erica, it was such a pleasure hearing from you tonight. The school district of Lee County is very lucky to have such a motivated student, such a well-spoken public speaker. Thank you for being here.
Dr. Bernair? Sorry. I forgot. I'm sorry to thank you, Erica. We had a little bit of a governance in action, so I hope you really saw that. You see how the process works. I just find that's amazing. So, great job, and I'm going to ask you this, is every other student rep, once you go to school, can you come back and work in Lee County? So remember that, please. Now, Dr. Bernair, thank you for indulging me.
So I'm going to start with Marina Bay. I'll be out there first thing tomorrow morning. No motion tonight does not mean no action. I think that's the most important. I think I want you to leave with, so as community members who already had to leave this evening, get in touch with you via text, via email, and the other ways you communicate with each other. Please let them know that not having a motion this evening does not mean there won't be action. This clearly lies in the purview of the superintendent. It's an operational issue. It's been reviewed. It's been looked at. It needs, it needs, a decision needs to be made. So I appreciate that coming forward. Erica, I'm going to take it a different way. I've seen you in the student, in the student role, in the student advisory committee. I've watched you, I would say, grow, not from the aspect of, like, real growth, but more along the lines of watch you get more comfortable and share your leadership style with the group. Those attributes were already fully developed when you walked in. I have to tell you, I love the fact that your New York accent creeps in there occasionally. The minute you, the minute you said New York, I knew where you were from. And the other piece is, anybody ever attending one of my alma maters always gets a special place, so go Knights. I'm excited about UCF. It's a great place to go school. And to Mr. Fisher's comment, whether you come back as a forensic psychologist or something else, please think about volunteering in your schools, whether you become an educator or just want to come in, talk on a career day, or like we're doing this week, come in and read to a group of first and second graders your favorite book. It's a lot of fun, and we hope that you'll be an active member of our community when you return. USDA, I wanted to make sure the board and the public knew, who still are listening, that the United States Department of Agriculture was here over the past few weeks auditing a select set of schools. They never audit all the school buildings. They always take a random sample. The Audit for Food Service came back with no findings. The National Schools Social Worker Recognition Week is this week. If you haven't hugged your social worker, find her or him and give them a hug. Want people to know, based upon some of the developments late last week, with a situation in Cape Coral, where there, where somebody who may or may not be transient or homeless had a conversation with a lot of our students, potentially threatening Cape High, and then sort of disappeared into the community. Put about four or five of our schools on lockdown over the course of the morning, including having to transport students because they couldn't get into their schools. So buses were arriving, and we couldn't accept them because we didn't want to put them in any type of danger, so we had to reroute them to Gulf and Trafalgar Elementary. Proud of the staff for responding. Thank you to the parents who were patient with us on an early release day. And thankfully, and most importantly, thank you to the Cape Coral Police Department and our own safety team here for doing the hard work to bring that person in for questioning and other things. Today, I just want the board to know at 11:00 AM, there was an after-action review. One of the things we did with our swatting calls with Mariner and with South is we established an after-action review, so we can go over lessons we need to continue to learn, how we can even better communicate during the process. And our chief of staff, Dave Nuland, hosted those individuals responsible and thanked them for doing the hard work of making sure that if we're ever in that situation again, we can do it better from every aspect, because there's always a chance to improve. Finally, I would like to take, thank the board for taking action a number of months ago in supporting the Kelly Services contract. We have moved from about an average fill rate for substitutes of 60%. So if we have 100 vacancies, we're covering about 60 classes. With Kelly Services, out of 100 vacancies, we're now covering between 84 and 85. And those numbers seem to be improving, so we'll continue to keep you updated. I think I'm going to move just to a weekly update versus the everyday update we were providing you last week during the first week of implementation. And thank you to our teachers and to our principals, and most importantly, probably an information specialist or a school secretary who is responsible for making sure they organize and ensure that subs are in the classrooms. Our people do a lot of multiple hat-wearing, and wanted to recognize those individuals who make that work happen, including people here at the district office, specifically John Erde, she is the spearhead in HR behind this particular, this particular process. So thank you very much for that opportunity. Hopefully, we can continue to report great things, and I'll get back to the board tomorrow after my visit.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this point, next meetings on Tuesday, March 26, there will be a school board workshop at 12:00 PM, a school board briefing at 2:30 PM, followed by a school board action meeting at 6:00. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:15. Everyone, have a great evening.